Do not they get caught again?
I'll get caught in any car.
Okay. Good morning. This is the Weber County, Weber County Board of Commissioners on this, the 20th day of July, 2021. We welcome you here, those of you who are here in person, and those of you who are online, and those of you who may be joining us at some future time, thanks to technology. We appreciate Bill Francis and his imagination company that always helps us with our things, our postings and everything, and of course, Stacy and Christie and Shelley in our office. We appreciate you very much. Our pledge of allegiance will be given by McCarty-Fror this morning. She will lead us. Following McCarty, our invocation will be given by Mr. Brian Barron, and our thought for the day will be given by Commissioner Gage-Fror.
So, can we just call him McCarty?
Yeah, go ahead. So, McCarty is the granddaughter of Gage and Gloria-Fror.
Okay, please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this beautiful morning. We're thankful to be gathered here together to discuss the business of the county. We thank Thee for the beautiful country we live in and all the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank Thee for the opportunity to live in this area and for all the wonderful people that we get to work with and associate with. Please bless us with wisdom and guide us and help us as we work together that we can encourage each other and build each other up and help us look for ways to serve those who are in need and help us in all things as we strive to be more like Thee and more like Thy Son, Jesus Christ. And these things we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner-Fror.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, if you'll notice, I'm actually wearing an appropriate style cowboy shirt today, and you might want to know why, why I'm wearing a cowboy shirt on this day.
With a bolo tie.
With a bolo tie.
Yes.
So, let me explain to you why. It's actually Ogden Pioneer, Pioneer Days Rodeo Week, Pioneer's Day in Ogden, and I thought I might give you a little bit of history on Pioneer Days and why a lot of us dress up in appropriate attire. And that's to give recognition to the past Mayor of Ogden City, Mayor Harm-Perry, actually established Pioneer Days in 1934, right kind of at the end of the Great Depression. Ogden City wasn't having great times. A lot of people were, it's an uncertain future. He thought this would be an event that would be a national-recognized event, rodeo. So, he, he started that rodeo in 1934. I think we're past the 80-year mark, and many of us that have lived here for years, this kind of becomes one of the major holidays. A lot of people recognize Thanksgiving, Christmas, Easter, but for those of us that have attended this rodeo for the past however number of years, in my case, quite a few, won't mention that number, it becomes a very important holiday, something we look forward to. Now, keep in mind that the days, excuse me, the Days of '47 in Salt Lake are a little different than Ogden Pioneer Days. Days of '47 was established to recognize the pioneers when they came into Salt Lake Valley, July 24th, 1847. This was set up for a reason, basically Ogden's heritage. So, this is what we call our Ogden's own. You may also know that Ogden received its name or took its name from Peter Skeen Ogden, who actually trapped in my hometown of Ogden Valley. Miles Goodyear was actually the one that homesteaded Ogden, had a cabin in Fort Benaventura, which I'm sure that you know his cabin was down there. So, anyway, just a little history, a lot of us are proud of our Ogden heritage. Cowboys call this the Cowboy Christmas because they travel around, they do a lot of rodeos. If you go out past the rodeo grounds today, you'll see a lot of, and I was by there yesterday, you'll see a lot of trailers, big trailers.
Horse trailers.
Horse trailers, horse trailers and campers and yeah. So, they, this is their Cowboy Christmas. This is where they hit a lot of times three or four rodeos in a given period of time. I happened to be married to a past professional barrel racer, and this was her Cowboy Christmas where she would travel throughout Idaho and Utah and other parts, and quite frequently came home with a paycheck. So, it was very good, but rodeo, rodeo becomes part of your blood.
We were corrected that she always came home with a paycheck.
Always came home with a paycheck, but it's a great time to celebrate. It's a great time to recognize our heritage. It's a great time in Weber County, Ogden City, to recognize where we came from and give, give thanks to those, that leadership that came before of us that had the foresight to set up these type of events. So, that's my thought. Chair-Hartley.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Great thoughts today.
Anything you'd like to add on that? Do you remember Harm-Perry?
I don't.
He's probably been in the rodeo almost as much as I have.
I've been a lot, but I can't, I can't begin to keep up with that thought. I'm just grateful to have been here and hear it. Well, one more, I do remember that I think from almost the very beginning, it was advertised, you know, you could tell how old a media station is by their call letters, and if they have three call letters, many of you know, many of you know KSL and ABC and NBC, those are old, old communication outlets because they only have three letters. The new things like KUTV and KTVX and those are newer. They have four, and KLO Radio, and many of you remember Len Allen. He would get up there and call those rodeos every night for years and years, and that's, that's great.
I didn't think you were that old.
I remember KLO. Okay, great. Well, thanks for that, that thought again, Commissioner-Fror. Appreciate it. This morning, we have a public comments. These public comments will be taken for items that are listed on the agenda. If there are those in the audience that would like to comment on items that are listed in or on the action items on the agenda, we'd ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and we can hear those now. Item E, Echo. Are there any online, Stacy? None online? And please come forward. State your name and the town which you live.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Jan Fulmer, and I live in Eden, Utah, up in Ogden Valley.
Welcome, Ms. Fulmer.
All right. With respect to action item number five on your agenda on the rezone on the Basin Project, please do not allow this development, regardless of any development agreement, to provide short-term rentals for the following reasons. And I have extracted data from the Weber County databases to back up what I'm about to tell you. Number one, you'll be increasing the number of dwelling units that allow short-term rentals without having any effective ordinances for enforcement. You do not have any factual data available that identifies how many current dwelling units exist in Ogden Valley that are zoned for short-term rentals. You will be allowing real estate values to continue to escalate in Ogden Valley, making housing unaffordable for Valley families and accelerating the loss of community. This is simply not in support of the Ogden Valley general plan. If you approve the rezoning of this parcel with the ability to provide STRs, then you are in direct conflict with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, and you will be setting precedent for future developments. Ogden Valley does not want to become a Moab, a Sun Valley, a Park City, or even an Aspen, where affordable housing for essential workers like police, healthcare, teachers is simply nonexistent. In these communities, real estate prices have escalated due to short-term rentals, forcing existing residents to move elsewhere. The mayor of Sun Valley can't even live in Sun Valley. He can't afford it. Moab cannot fill their need for essential workers, but Moab did take some action. They recently put a moratorium on any future short-term rental permits. Real estate prices have escalated in Ogden Valley, and by the way, the new assessments are now posted. And the analysis of all the real estate sales in Ogden Valley in the 13 months from the first of 2020 till the first of February 2021, 52% of all the real estate sales were for dwellings in areas zoned for short-term rentals. And the new Weber County assessments, as I said, have been posted, and I think Ogden Valley residents are going to be shocked at what the assessment values are. Two grammar requests were submitted and sent to John Ulliberry in the assessor's office, and they were, how many total dwellings are there in Ogden Valley? And of those, how many are in areas zoned for short-term rentals? And how many are second homes where the owner is in, it's not their primary residence? When I submitted these, John Ulliberry called me directly, and I'm very thankful for his call, and he said, "Jan, well, we really can't provide the data on dwellings based on zone. The data isn't set up that way, but I can tell you types of dwellings, for instance, townhomes, duplexes, single-family homes, and that can give you a guesstimate on how many dwellings provide short-term rentals. I also can't really provide you with a definitive number on how many second homes are not occupied by the primary owner." He says there are just a lot of people we know that simply take the risk and say, "Oh, no, that's our primary residence," but they live elsewhere.
If you drop up, please.
I'm sorry, yes. We did investigate communities and validated, there are now 1,091 dwelling units in Ogden Valley that allow short-term rentals. We also looked at the population of the schools, and you know what? It's declining, both in the elementary school by 7% since 2012-13 and in the middle school by 13%. It is really hoped that you're going to give serious consideration to developing some effective processes and enforcement ordinances for short-term rentals, and please consider the concerns of Ogden Valley.
Thank you.
Commissioner-Fror, you just said what a great valley it is, the founders, going back to Pioneer Day. We're going to lose it if it keeps going in the direction it's going, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Jan? I have a question for you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Am I allowed to answer past my three minutes?
You are.
Okay, thank you.
You come up with 1,091 short-term rentals. How, how accurate do you think that is?
They are very accurate. We not only checked the zone that each of those units were in, we contacted management companies who manage the rentals, and we contacted HOA presidents of the different communities.
So, when you said...
Thanks, Stacy.
When you said 1,091, these are not homes in that area. These ones are actually participating in short-term rentals.
To the best of our knowledge, yes. Those communities have active short-term rentals.
Okay, very good. That's a, that's a big number. We had that number for the entire county.
That is just...
And I understand there's not a lot out west, but...
No, sir, Commissioner, that is just in Ogden Valley, and I have been sending Scott Perkey's updated spreadsheets every time we find more, and I have that spreadsheet ready to send to you if you'd like it. It itemizes every community, how many units, how many bedrooms per unit.
Thank you, Jan.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
Any others online, Stacy? Any others in the galley?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead. State your name and your area where you're from, please.
Okay, my name's John Bingham, and I live in Eden, and I had a couple of questions with regard to action item number five.
Mr. Bingham, we won't, we won't be taking questions, but we will be taking statements if you'd like to go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I would ask that when Charlie makes the presentation on action five, I would like to know why this is being rezoned to FR3 from a CVR, because the short-term rentals that are proposed are obviously a commercial venture and not conducive to what the FR3 zone that they're proposing. And the second question or statement that I'd like to make is that I believe that on rezone requests, there's usually a, a public hearing involved with most rezone requests. Why, why is there no public hearing in this regard? And the third thing is, if it's being proposed to rezone to FR3, my understanding that in an FR3 zone, that there is one unit per three acres, this would be putting 13 units in five acres, and so, isn't that a violation of the FR3 zone that they're proposing? Those are the things that I hope will be answered when that comes up. Thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. And just for the record, Mr. Bingham, will you just state the area that you live in, please?
Yes, I live in Eden.
Thank you, sir. Bird, come on up. State your name and the area you live, please.
My name's James Bird. I live at 1052 Meadowlark Lane in Huntsville. Before I begin, I would like to correct an item that I think needs to be corrected on your agenda because it's pretty critical to this. Can I do that before I begin?
Your three minutes are tapped. Go ahead.
Well, this is not about rezoning CVR1 to FR3 for, for those two parcels because one parcel is a CV2, so you may want to correct that on your thing. The Snow Basin is CV2. Anyway, also, the rezoning about this is not about going to FR3. It's about, simply about 13, 4,000 square foot short-term rentals. This request is to have 20 occupants per dwelling. It's a large cluster of STRs that would accommodate 260 people and will circumvent the ordinances that pertain to lodges and hotels. They are not your mom-and-pop STRs like we're discussing or you were discussing yesterday. They are designed to be sold by investors. Therefore, clusters on a short-term rental program should have different rules. A large number of rentals should be required to have a traffic study, a water and sewer impact study before they are approved. According to Weber County ordinances, a traffic impact study would have to be conducted if these were hotels. As STRs, they don't have to show how this large number of dwellings and potential 260 people in one area could impact the adjacent community in terms of water, sewer, or traffic. In the 29th, June 29th meeting, the three of you listened to this argument. Nothing has changed from what the planning department has said, and at that meeting, you voted to postpone this until you had an STR agreement, and we really support that. I don't know what's changed on it. As everyone knows also is that this, we don't have a reservoir. We are operating from a well. I think you operate from a well. So, when Charlie stated that, you know, over a course of a year, that the water probably wouldn't be used anymore in these 13 rentals than what is normally used, that's wrong because we require that the wells be recharged. It's not about over a year if you've used a well. It's about during a period of time, and if you have 260 people renting these places during July 24th with all their families and that, they're going to use a lot of water. As you said yesterday, showers take a lot of water. There's something like over 80 bathrooms, 80 showers. This is a huge volume of water, and as I like saying, what goes in goes out, and that's going to impact the sewer. One final comment, because I had to correct your agenda. As Commissioner Jenkins implied, CVR1s are not always inherently bad. In fact, if this were a hotel, first of all, it couldn't be a hotel. It would never pass the traffic impact study. Old Snow Basin Road is currently a danger. You keep building on Old Snow Basin Road, and you are risking our lives if there were a fire. There is no left- or right-hand turn lane to get onto 39. There's no secondary access. I've sent two letters now to you saying, consult with the fire marshal. He told us it was inadequate. Again, a hotel or lodge would need to have a traffic impact study conducted, and it's likely that it would not pass unless Old Snow Basin Road was changed. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Are there any others?
Yes, Kevin Irwin online would like to speak.
One moment, please. Stacy, you ready? Go, go ahead if you'll state your name and the area, please.
Yes, Kevin Irwin, Huntsville. So, following up on what has been stated, the question for me is, or I guess the issue for me is, I look at how and where we're zoning. The request is a FR3, the FR3, based on reading of the code, it is supposed to be in conjunction with a recreational resort. I don't see how this space is in conjunction with a recreational resort. In addition, there's a CVR1, which is what is classified now, right across the street with the same setup, the Escape at Edgewater's, single-family homes, high density or medium density in terms of the discussion here. They're making it work from that standpoint. So, the question then becomes, what is the change? Why is the change? And why is it going to be listed and described differently than what's immediately across the street? At the end of the day, if you take a look at the properties and what's kind of common in the space, it's an FV3, it's a lower density, the area is set up for that. That is what's common on that side of 39 in all of the different neighborhood, neighborhoods that are there. So, this really doesn't seem to fit with the common structure, common layout of everything else that's there. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you spell your last name for the record, please?
Yes, Kevin, K-E-V-I-M, last name Irwin, I-R-W-I-N.
Irwin, thank you very much. Are there any others online?
Thank you.
Gwendolyn Smith, your comments? Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I am in Huntsville on 926 Meadowlark Lane, and as has been mentioned, a little different, you know, the Ogden Valley general plan, I think initially got it right. There would be a need in this area of the Valley with the growth that was expected for some commercial support, and the idea has been through the conversations that residential inherently is better than commercial. And while generally it could be true, what has been proposed here residentially is not better than our commercial option. It actually is removing the opportunities we have to protect against different ordinances and compliances that are needed for commercial ventures of this type. The way this is being proposed, it's not a residential community. It is a commercial venture being asked to be zoned residential so that it doesn't have to enforce rules. Those rules are in place to protect those of us who have invested in the Valley and live in the Valley, and my, my ask would be to consider that maybe the Ogden Valley general plan got it correct and that this would be better served by having some commercial ventures there versus this type of residential development that's being planned, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith.
Next one is Donna.
First name Donna, if you'll state, state and spell your last name, please, online.
My name is Donna Cangelosi. I'm a homeowner in Ogden Valley. I live in Green Hills. I also own a condominium at Lakeside that I rent out, as well as vacant lands in Huntsville, so I have a fair investment here. I also act as a U.S. trustee for distressed property, which often takes me into land development. For a project like this, there is public comment that's required, but more importantly, there is a complete environmental impact study that's required to be done, as a predecessor who spoke said, including a water and sewer study, impact study, traffic study, environmental impact study, secondary environmental EVA, emergency vehicle access. But the one thing, in recent, only in the last 30 days, there has been a plethora of articles talking about Utah being the highest fire risk in the country for home structures. When we deplete our water sources by basically permitting overdevelopment, we fail to be able to develop defensible... able to develop defensible space. I moved here from Lake Tahoe. We all have defensible space, and that includes landscaping. I believe in various different areas, it goes from anywhere from 20 to 30 feet around our homes. That actually provides some level of barrier. If we don't have the water to do that, we increase our fire risk. By putting more dwellings and certainly 80 bathrooms, that's going to increase the fire A condo renter over at Lakeside, we continuously have problems with multi-unit dwelling units, okay? I'm possibly part of the problem, because I do rent my unit out, but the constant, constant monitoring that we've had to do in there in order to be able to control the environment and to basically peaceably not disturb. So there's an environmental impact there that really requires public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Candelosi. Appreciate it. Hope I said your name quote-close or correctly. Are there any others?
I'm sorry?
Are there any others online? Stacy, seeing none, thank you so much for your comments today. I also want you to know that we... Would you like to comment, sir?
I'm Ray Bowden, and I own Lakeview Water. And I just wanted to clarify a few things from yesterday's discussion that I heard about. And as far as the will serve letter goes, to Pineview Water's line, we did issue a will serve for 13 water connections and a will serve for 13 sewer connections. But that was done on normal residential hookups. And it's been brought to our attention that some of these are going to have eight bedrooms, seven bathrooms, and the impact that's going to have from just a standard home that has two or three bathrooms and maybe four or five bedrooms is a big difference. So there is going to be some more engineering and a little study that'll need to go with this to try to make this work if it goes that way.
Anything else, Mr. Bowden?
That's all I have.
Oh, questions for him?
Please, yeah, I'll recognize that. Go ahead.
Okay. So Ray, good seeing you again.
Thank you.
The question I have is in here, in your letter, you said, "Any such agreed upon conditions will be reflected in a final executive development agreement." Has that been issued yet?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, this is in your letter, signed by you.
Oh.
So this is one you're producing, this executive development agreement.
All right.
Okay, secondly, you talk about residential units. If this is to be maintained in its current condition and not rezoned, would you serve the commercial side of this, depending on what it is? Or is it just you will not serve the commercial?
Well, right now, it's just the impact that you would have with the water shortage that we've got.
Right, so it's just the impact on your system?
It's the impact on the system.
Okay, so then you're not saying you wouldn't serve the commercial. You're saying it depends on what the commercial is?
Yes, and if, at that time, we had the volume to take care of it. But that just comes along with engineering.
I just wondered, because it was represented, or at least in my mind, I got it, that you would not serve anything beyond 13 residential units. And you're saying, depending on what it is, if it stays the way it is, because today, he can put this amount on here without any rezoning. It's just that 10% has to be set aside for commercial. And I just wanted to make sure, depending on what it is, that you would serve the commercial just depending.
It depended on the size and what it was and, you know?
Sure. Thanks, sir. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowden? Great, commissioners, we're going to move on to our agenda. Thank you very much for the comments given. I also, I want to thank those of you who commented, those of you online who commented, those of you who took the time out and came here, and we appreciate your comments very much. I also want to thank the many of you who submitted emails to the commission. Please know that the emails have all been entered into public record, and so that you have been heard. So if we didn't get back to you, they have been entered into public record, and we appreciate that. Commissioners, we're going to move on to our consent items, which is item F like Foxtrot on our agenda. For the record, I will read those now. Item one is a request for approval to ratify warrants 460092 and 460221 and 4074 to 4101 in the amount of $644,404.80 dated the 13th of July 2021. Item two, commissioners, is a request for approval of warrants 4201 to 4129 and 460222 and 4631, including 460426, and number 105 in the amount of $1,197,764.42. Item three is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $321,224.15. Item four is a request for Weber County Sheriff's Office for approval to surplus an O2 cylinder carry bags to be donated to other entities. Item five is a request for approval to ratify new business license for Peddler's Cafe and Catering, dated the 13th of July 2021. Item six is a request for approval of the new business licenses. And item seven is a request for approval of ramp agreements by and between Weber County and the following entities. These are projects that were approved back in March 3rd, 2021. It would be the Utah Humanities Book Programming, Ogden City Events Programming, Ogden City Union Station Events Programming, Ogden City Union Station Vowing Theater Updates. Item eight is a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Epic Engineering PC for the extension of the SWPP inspection and services contract. And I think that's SWP-P-P, commissioners, there's three Ps on that. Item nine is a request for approval of amendment number four, contract number 180252 in the amount, and between, excuse me, by and between Weber County and the State of Utah Attorney General's Office, the Children's Justice Center, for programming for a CJC forensic interviewer. Item 10 is a request for approval of amendment number eight to contract 160230 by and between Weber County and the State of Utah Attorney General's Office, the Children's Justice Center Program for a general operations grant allocation. Item 11 is a request for approval of amendment to an agreement by and between Weber County and Rebecca Voimas for juvenile delinquency hearings. Item 12 is a request for approval of an amendment to an agreement by and between Weber County and Gage Crowther for civil commitment hearings. Item 13 is a request for approval of a $27,480 donation to Prop 1 Funds to Trails Foundation in northern Utah for the sign adapters, asphalt repair, and a concept report for a future trail from Liberty Park to North Fork Park. Item 14 is a request to approve change order number five for contract 2020-8 with E.K. Bailey Construction for the Sheriff's Office Warehouse. Item 15 is a request for the approval of an addendum to the mental health services agreement with Alpha Counseling and Treatment for inmates at the Weber County Correctional Facility. And item 16, our final one today, is a request for approval of contracts by and between Weber County and the following individuals for services in the Ogden Musical Theater's production of Into the Woods, which starts the 29th of July and ends the 14th of August. Isn't that right, Ms. Bybee? We highly encourage you to participate by seeing that great Broadway entertainment right here in our local area. Anyway, these productions, Into the Woods, would be for Matty Tarbox, who's the director, Sidney Hall, the stage manager, Marilyn Montgomery, the choreographer, Alicia Condrick, our costume designer, Corey Lamb, the sound designer, David Reese, the lighting designer, Victoria Wood for the props designer, and Cynthia Johnson, who's the wig designer. Wig designer, I would like to meet with her. Commissioners, questions on any of those 16 items? Mr. Jenkins, go ahead.
Item 12.
Please.
Is everybody here representing the courts? So I'm just a little surprised that on this, nobody came to talk to me about it. And I show two district court, or drug court, drug court calendar. I wasn't of the opinion we paid for anything resulting from courts. The state normally pays for that.
Our civil attorney, Christopher Crockett, I know that, can you help with this? Or maybe Brian, would you have anything?
I believe Mr. Baron is here. Help answer with questions for this.
Address the commission on this. The great Brian Baron from our civil attorney's office. Go ahead, Mr. Baron.
Good morning. So your question is regarding item 12 and 13, those amendments?
Item 12. So if you go to that, it shows the, what we're paying for the amount that says two district court calendar. That's something in the courts, in drug courts.
Right.
We traditionally don't pay for courts. Courts are paid for by the state of Utah.
That's correct. And that's a way of summarizing Mr. Crowther's assignments in court. So Mr. Gage Crowther, he's one of our indigent defense attorneys.
Well, this is specifically for Mr. Crowther and indigent.
This is the attorney.
It is, yeah. So he covers two court calendars, and then we're amending his agreement to add civil commitment coverage on there as well.
Didn't say that. So that's why I flagged it.
I apologize for the confusing language.
Normally on stuff like this, you'll come say something, too. So I'm just fine to give you...
Any others?
Nope.
Commissioner Faur, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Great, then, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
I've moved to approve the consent items. Agenda items F1 through and including 16.
I have a motion for F1 through 16.
Second.
Thank you. Those consent items, I'll place that motion for vote now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. I'm sorry, you know, I went ahead with that, and I missed you, Mr. Taylor, to go over some of the details. Commissioner, would you like the details at this point?
Doesn't matter to me.
I think I'd like to still, for the public's benefit, go over that. Mr. Taylor?
I'm sure it wouldn't hurt. Thank you, Commissioner. I've got summaries for 158 warrant reports totaling $644,000. Largest of these, 15% or $97,000 for property management, cladding for the Weber Center. 15% and $96,000 to the library for cataloging services, books and materials, and RFID tags. 11% or $73,000 to the roads department, striping for the roads, and 11% or $69,000 to the conference center for elevator repairs. Those are the largest of those.
Very good. Thank you.
So he's sitting on the other side of the room, and I know that's why it's kind of set you off.
That's okay.
You missed him.
I missed it. If that's the only wrong thing I do today, I'll be really happy. But thank you. He's trying to play, he's trying to do several different things all at the same time, and we're glad to have you here. Then you're a great, you're a great, you're a great person to have around. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. The next one, Commissioner, this is in your portfolio, I believe, Commissioner Jenkins, but this is our action items. We're going to move to item G like Gulf on our agenda. It's a request for approval of a resolution, so this will be a roll call vote, of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing trustees to the governing board of the Little Mountains Service Area. Ms. Skeen, go ahead, please.
Good morning, commissioners. There are two vacancies on the Little Mountains Service Area Board. I have posted in accordance with state statute. I received one eligible application that you have before you. His name is Jeff McGilton. And as per Code 17B-1-302 subsection 3C, if there are no other qualified applicants, then the commissioners may appoint another one of their own members to serve in the other position. Currently, Commissioner Jenkins serves on this board as well.
And does an incredible job there. Well, you laugh about that, but you really have in the five years of looking at it. You've done an awesome job there. Thank you.
You know, I sit on a chair and watch and vote.
You've made some, you've made some good, we've made some great progress out there.
Thank you.
Anyway, any comments? This is your portfolio again, Commissioner Jenkins. Go ahead.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Mr., hold on. Commissioner Faur, any comments?
Nope.
Go ahead with your motion then, Commissioner Jenkins.
Hey, I'd like to appoint Jeffrey H. McGilton to the board. He's the one who has applied in the applications in your packet there. He's a plant manager out there at Western Conium, and he's certainly qualified, so I have no problem with that. And I'd also make a motion, so that's in the form of a motion.
Very good.
To approve him. Secondly, I'd like to make a motion that we include in this as a board member, Commissioner Gage Faur.
We've got a motion.
Second.
And there's a second. Great. I'll place that motion for vote. That would be Jeff McGilton and Commissioner Gage Faur on that board. That'll fill those vacancies rather nicely. Place that motion for vote. That's a roll call vote. Mr. Taylor?
Correct. Resolution 27, Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair Harvey?
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Skeen. Appreciate it. Action item number two on our agenda is a request for approval of a grant award agreement by and between Weber County and the Indigent Defense Commission for various indigent defense purposes, including an administrative assistant, two specialty attorneys, and a district court contract, and added funding for civil commitments and juvenile delinquencies. Brian Baron, welcome back.
Thank you. So the Indigent Defense Commission has awarded Weber County grant funding for the past several years. And this particular agreement includes funding for some of the contracts that we've approved in the past for specialty attorneys and district court attorneys. But it also includes additional funding for juvenile delinquency calendars and a civil commitment calendar. Both of those were handled by some of our administrators, Mike Bowis and Mary Ann Ellis. And what this does is it takes those responsibilities from them and assigns it to other attorneys so they're freed up to do more administrative-type work.
Very good. Commissioners, questions?
Just a comment, if I...
Please. Commissioner Faur?
I know we've had discussions in the past, Ryan, about the Indigent Defense Commission approving those funds, so it appears that they approved the funds from last year and then added some to that for the juvenile side.
Yes, they have.
Which is very positive.
Yes, it is.
So, no, I think this is a good sign. We had some debate whether we had to put, or concerns that this might have to come onto our budget. And as of where we sit right now, the Indigent Defense Commission has helped us a little bit.
Correct. Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion to approve the grant award agreement by and between Weber County and the Indigent Defense Commission for various indigent defense purposes, including an administrative assistant, two specialty attorneys, and a district court contract, and adding additional funds for the civil commitment and juvenile delinquencies.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, I'll place that motion for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I know, Commissioner Faur, it's like reading a tongue twister.
It is, yeah.
For those of you who want to try a box of biscuits, a box of mixed biscuits, and a biscuit mixer, I challenge you to play that back several times and try to say it fast, and you'll have fun with that. Anyway, try it, McCarthy, I think you'll like it. All right, item three is a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and the Broken Heart Rodeo for a rodeo to be held at the 2021 Weber County Fair. Our director out there, Mr. Duncan Olson.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Olson.
This one's pretty standard, the same type of contract we've had with Broken Heart for the last probably decade. They come in and do a great job. Wednesday night of the fair is our rodeo. We're looking forward to it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Olson regarding the Broken Heart Rodeo contract? Really is a great contract, a lot of cowboys from a lot of different talent coming, and most of them are hometown. This will be a great event. Wednesday night, that'll be the 11th of August.
Correct.
And just to clarify, with admission to the fair, is the rodeo included?
Yeah, the rodeo will be free this year. Last year, we charged because of spacing and restrictions that we had, but this year it's back to being free.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, entertain a motion?
Do approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
Approve in a second. I'll place that motion for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bybee, she has a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Kenneth Plane for services as the director of the Ogden Musical Theater 2021 production of Into the Woods.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners.
Go ahead.
He is our musical director. And the reason why he wasn't on the consent agenda is because he's, his contract is slightly over the threshold. But he's worth every single penny that we're paying him. Into the Woods music is Sondheim, and it's very difficult music. That's why you have so many actors that want to do Into the Woods, because they want to participate and have that challenge. And working with Kenneth Plane out of Weber State has just been exceptional, and he's been able to help these actors so much with the music, and being able to understand all the words of, and dialect that go so quickly in these songs, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Bybee with regards to this contract? I know, Commissioner Jenkins, you have a wonderful singing voice. Would you like to use that in making a motion? I know Commissioner Jenkins, you have a wonderful singing voice, would you like to use that in making a motion?
I'd make a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, thank you. I'll place that motion for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And item number five is a request for approval of a request to amend the Weber County zone map to rezone the approximately five point zero acres of the CVR one zone to the FR three zone at approximately nine forty-seven east Old Snow Basin Road. Charlie Ewer, now Charlie, before you make your presentation, would you please include the following? We had some great comments by Ms. Fuller, also Mr. Bingham, who asked three questions. Why the rezone? The rezone requests, uh, and also, uh, one dwelling on three acres, how that goes. Uh, Mr. Bird talked about, uh, the Snow Basin. There was a, the petition was not what they were existing, but also, but the, your suggestion was to go to the FR three, but if you'll explain that, please.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Irwin talked about FR three in conjunction with a recreational resort, and then, uh, uh, the investment, uh, with Ms. Smith, and then also Mr. Bowden talked about water, but I think that's the water company. But if you'll cover those, I'd appreciate it in your presentation, go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, no problem, I didn't have a, uh, a more robust presentation than, uh, what we discussed, uh, three weeks ago. The discussion is still the same as it was at that time, um, as Mr. Bird pointed out. Um, the reason it's back on the agenda is because the applicant has asked for a final decision, a thumbs up or thumbs down, um, knowing the risk that if there's not enough information to make a decision today, that the commission may say no. Um, and that's fine, they've got some deadlines, uh, in their private contracts that they need to meet, and so they just need an answer, one way or the other. As far as each of those questions go, happen to, happy to, uh, answer any one of them. You may need to refresh my memory on each one as we go through, my attention span is about as good as my memory.
Will you just talk about why the rezone in the first place?
Sure.
Just, uh, just the cliff notes, please?
Yeah, let's start there, so that the reason for the rezone is because the applicant has asked for it. Um, anyone who owns property can petition the county to change the zone. And then the county engages on a process to, uh, determine whether or not it's appropriate to change it.
And answers kind of the second one, then there's also zoning up there that allows one, uh, one dwelling on three acres. Can you cover that, why this is not under those same things?
Yeah, so the FR three zone is not one dwelling per three acres, that's the FV three zone. So, a little bit of confusion, I mean, I understand why you get some of the, uh, characters that are the same in there, but FR three is.
We've only got thirty-one different.
Yeah.
Ones. That FV three zone is something that Mr. Irwin talked about, so that explains that.
Yep, that's three acres in the FV three zone, but FR three, the three stands for most intense essentially. You've got FR one, two, and three, we only have an FR three, and it's the most intense of FR zones.
For, for just history wise, too, this is currently zoned as a FR, FR three zone, and how long has it been an FR three zone, how many years?
Currently zoned CVR one.
My bad.
Right, um, I believe it was since two thousand and seven, I can't remember the exact date, but it was rezoned, uh, about a, more than a decade ago, uh, for the purpose of citing a hotel on the property.
For the purpose for putting a hotel on the property, but also, what was it zoned, was it a, what was the, what was it, the zoning like before two thousand and seven?
My understanding is it was like the zone that was right next door, which is, um, that is FV three, and that would be one unit to three acres. So it was moved up from one unit to three acres to, uh, actually, you know what, let me take a step back. It was CV two, as is the Snow Basin property across the street. So it went from CV two to CVR one, but shortly before CV two, it was FV three, which is the three acre minimum that the neighbors have.
Very good. And then, uh, I wrote the notes down as best I could. And then you answered, why are we hearing this again, because, you answered that. And as far as investment goes, you know, the, that, uh, one of the things, uh, Fuller, we're, we're appreciating unprecedented, uh, desire for homes. And so as, as, uh, homes sell, uh, and they sell for a particular value, it raises the price of everything else in the valley. So the only way you can stop that growth of pricing is if you go to sell your home and it's worth a million dollars, you probably should accept six hundred thousand so you can keep the whole valley floor at a lower rate. But that's not fair for those who have the floor, or who are selling their home. Unfortunately, there are more people who want to buy homes in the valley, and so that just pushes the price up, and that not just happens in the valley, does it?
Kinda happens all over, yeah.
Happens everywhere, so it, it's happening everywhere, and that's just something that, there's not things that we can control. Commissioners, are there any other questions by any of the petitioners that you'd written down that you'd like to hear from Mr. Ewer today?
There's a couple we didn't answer, uh, surrounding, uh, see, water was one of them.
Okay, please go ahead, Charlie, I'd appreciate any help, I'm up here doing this the best I can.
Yeah, in fact, uh, talk about water and, and other infrastructure and site constraints, so, um, as, as you can see across the valley floor, zoning exists on every single property in the entire county. Um, it has to, uh, uh, in order to essentially have a, a zone map and a general plan map. We didn't zone property across the entire valley floor of the Ogden Valley or everywhere else, um, in anticipation of specific development. And so that doesn't necessarily mean, that doesn't mean that every time we do a rezone, we're going to have an anticipation of a specific development. It does help when we rezone property to know what is intended to come. And so the applicant has submitted a concept plan and is willing to follow that concept plan through a development agreement. Um, if you rezone the property without a development agreement to the FR three zone, they can come in and they can divide the property how the zone allows them to. Thus far, they've said they're gonna do it as you see in the, uh, concept plan that's in your packets. So when it comes to some of the more scientific data gathering processes of development, that comes when a development is proposed. It doesn't come when a development is being proposed for a rezone. It's a reason why we only ask for very simplistic information when somebody asks, is asking for a rezone, and really, the question is, is there a reason to zone this property, uh, to the different zone? And if there is, then maybe the answer is affirmative. Whether or not they can get access to water, provide decent road infrastructure, um, get sewer infrastructure, all, all the services and all of the, um, uh, constraints that that site has, the developer will have to overcome. So we, I, I heard somebody talk about an environmental, environmental impact statement, an EIS is a federal process, it's not generally done at the county level. But we do ask for the developer, when they propose a subdivision, to look at traffic impacts. And our engineer has asked the developer to do so, and will likely require, if the impact, uh, demonstrates the need, additional improvements on, um, uh, Old Snow Basin Road. Now, UDOT, uh, is UDOT, that's not the county, and so UDOT gets to control what happens on Highway thirty-nine. To my understanding, Highway thirty-nine, there are no required improvements being made there, but if UDOT tells us, no, they need to put a turn lane in, then, uh, we'll work with them to put a turn lane in. And so all of that comes when a specific development proposal has come in. They have asked for preliminary approval on a subdivision, uh, on that site, whether they go to CV, or whether they stay CVR one, or they go to FR three, they've got a subdivision in, and they could probably get approval of that subdivision. The uses on the property have to comply with whatever that zone is. And so if it stays CVR one, they're gonna have to comply with a CVR one zone, which says essentially that they can have a recreation resort on the property, which one of the questions was, how is this going in, this isn't, there's no recreation resort around there? Well, depends on how you define a recreation resort, we do define what a recreation resort is. And as long as they have one recreational amenity on the property, we can define it, we can define it as a recreation resort. When I say we can, what I mean by that is if the plain language, uh, says one thing, you have to interpret it in error of the application. And so if the applicant says, this is a recreation resort because I have a tennis court, mini golf course, a swimming pool, whatever the recreational amenity is, then we're required to call it a recreation resort. So in the absence of a better definition of what a recreation resort is, the applicant gets to essentially decide, as long as they have all of the minimum qualifications of what is defined as a recreation resort. At the point that they have those minimum qualifications of what is defined as a recreation resort, uh, like a tennis court, at that point, they could put, um, dwelling units in, uh, because in the recre, the definition of recreation resort, it says that that is allowed. Doesn't say what kind of dwelling units, it doesn't say multifamily, it doesn't say single family, it just says dwelling units. A multifamily dwelling unit is a dwelling unit, a single family dwelling unit is a dwelling unit. And so if you look at the logical definitions of the terms that are in our code, you can fi, find that the applicant, excuse me, the applicant can do exactly what he's asking for if he puts a tennis court in. The one other thing that he needs to do, sorry, in the current zone, the other thing he needs to do, maybe not a tennis court, it could be anything, it could be any recreational amenity, uh, bike path that goes around the outside of the property. The other thing he needs to do is provide ten percent commercial space in the CVR one zone. So not only could he get thirteen residential dwelling units out of this, he needs to provide at least half an acre of commercial space. Now whether or not the water utility or the sewer utility can provide for that commercial space is not a question for the rezone, it's a question for the subdivision, and ultimately a question for the final use. If that subdivision, the applicant cannot get water and sewer for that ten percent commercial space, they won't be able to plat that as part of their subdivision, they'll have to leave it out. And if they leave it out, they can't develop on it, it's just gonna sit there as some kind of reserved space for future commercial, at, when they can get the utility. So, the objective being, I, I think that there's a lot of misunderstanding on behalf of the public when it comes to what the county has authority to do and not to do. Commissioners, you've got full authority to approve or deny today, and you can. But once we get to the zone of what can happen, uh, excuse me, once we get to applying a zone to the property, they're entitled to what that zone says they can do. And the CVR one zone is a far more intense zone than the FR three zone. FR three zone is thirteen residences, CVR one zone is the possibility of thirteen residences, uh, with all of their, um, incidental effects and resort, uh, effects and commercial effects. And that is why, from a planning perspective, planners have recommended approval of this rezone, because they're actually asking for a less intense zone, which will affect the neighbors less. We have had some, uh, emails floating around that the planners are, are advocating for the applicant. That's not necessarily true. Uh, the applicant happens to have the benefit of our recommendation, but the community has the benefit of our recommendation as well. I don't think you're gonna wanna see what the potential is on this property. Now, there was one comment made that said, maybe this is better for commercial. And if that's the case, that's, that's a political decision, that's a policy decision. Um, maybe the community wants to see a gas station right there on the corner, and that's fine. Uh, but what I've heard, uh, throughout the discussions is that the concern of the use of this particular three point five acres on that corner is going to be to the detriment of their single family residential dwelling units that are in that area. And I can't think of anything more detrimental than a, a more heavy intensity commercial or recreation resort use. And so that's why we have recommended, from Planning Division, that's why we have recommended that it be changed to a single family residential zone. Now, commercial zone, uh, the CVR one zone and the FR three zone allow almost the same exact amount of residential density, about twenty to twenty-one units to the acre. And this is three and a half acres, so if you do the math on that, you can see how many homes could potentially be packed in there. It's gonna, it could look just like it does right across the highway. That is what they could do if they had water and sewer to provide for it. They have opted not to, they've opted for thirteen, and it might be because there's limitations on water and sewer. But as Mr. Bowden mentioned, water and sewer infrastructure issues can be overcome, it's just a matter of negotiation and, um, how much it costs to get things done. So, uh, I think I've answered all the questions, but I've.
Except for, I would like you to talk why it's not listed as a public hearing today.
Oh, great, that's actually a great question, because a public hearing was listed in the last meeting, uh, for the county commission, and even then, that wasn't required. So, the state code says that for a rezone, the first public meeting to discuss the rezone has to be a public hearing, and that first public meeting was with the Planning Commission, uh, four months ago. And so every public meeting thereafter didn't have to be noticed as a hearing, but we have had a couple of, a number of hearings on this. Planning Commission, I believe, had one or two, and then so far, this is our second discussion in a public meeting, uh, beyond two to three different work sessions that the commission has had on this, on this project, so, uh, it wasn't required to be noticed as a hearing. Commissioners, if you would rather make this decision after a hearing, you can always postpone decision and, and ask for a hearing, and, and have it done at that time.
Thank you, Charlie. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ewer?
The question I have, uh.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner Jenkins.
What is the, uh, what is the Planning Commission recommending?
So the Planning Commission's recommendation is to rezone it to the FR three zone, they thought that.
To grant the rezone.
To grant the rezone, they thought that made sense, but they didn't wanna see the allowance for short-term rentals. It seems like a big, um, sticking point here is that the FR three zone allows short-term rentals. And the Planning Commission said, only if the, uh, developer agrees to a contract that says they won't use short-term rentals for a use on the property.
So, was there discussion in there, why?
Quite a bit, yeah, quite a bit, and, and you've heard a lot of the justification, um, from comments made today, uh, that the feeling for the Planning Commission was, there's just too many short-term rentals and not enough governing oversight of them, is what most of the public have, have said.
So, would they change the recommendation? You know, this is ahead of our short-term rental policy. And if we change that policy, would they then recommend that we include these folks in that, or they just don't want any short-term rentals repared?
Can't speak directly for the Planning Commission, but I can speculate, I speculate that, I doubt they would have changed the recommendation. And the reason for that is because they did make a recommendation on the short-term rental ordinance. And that is that you, uh, change the, the law for the new, uh, draft that staff have drafted up for short-term rentals, but only apply it, only allow it in the zones that currently allow for short-term rentals. So I would suspect that they wouldn't wanna see any new property rezone to a property that allows short-term rentals. So they wouldn't wanna see a spread.
No, it doesn't make sense.
Ask him another question.
I mean, in my mind, they're taking a, a ride away from this individual. You know, it's a property right he has today, of course, I guess the argument is, look, if he rezones, he's doing it to himself. All right, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions for me?
Commissioner Faur, any questions for Charlie?
No, I think, I've, we've talked about this quite a bit, I think I understand the issue here, so.
The applicant is here, if you have any questions for him.
Very good, thank you very much. Commissioners, I'll entertain any discussion on the item.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'd make a motion that we accept the, uh, proposals that the, uh, Plan Commission sent us to grant the rezone with restrictions on SDRs.
We have a motion?
And, uh, actually, I'll second that with a comment, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, my thinking prior to this meeting, I've, I've had a lot of emails, some informal, some not so informal, but, uh, it, uh, it appears to me that two ways we could go with this that make sense for Ogden Valley. I've been driving by that piece of property probably for the last sixty years, if not more, so I'm fairly familiar with that site. I'm, I'm totally fine keeping it, the, the CVR one, letting the develop, that, let, let them make the decision, that's the current zone. And again, the water issues, uh, in my opinion, are not, not a reason to approve a zone or not approve a zone. So, uh, I'm totally comfortable with that. Uh, I'm also comfortable following the Planning Commission's lead, um, even though that, um, it may appear to restrict some type of private property rights. Uh, we are in the midst, hopefully, within the next six to twelve months of, of finalizing an STR ordinance, I would hope we could. Um, no promises, but we've, um, at the, at this stage of game, I'm hesitant to approve a development that could take advantage of the rezone without having that ordinance in place. Because, uh, again, I'm not sure with that ordinance, we've talked about having a requirement of, uh, owner occupied, which could impact the developer. So, uh, from, uh, again, from a developer standpoint, I'm not sure, and I wouldn't be willing to say whatever it is today would exist, have the rights in the future, because that can change, that could very well change. I mean, I, I may be willing in the future to say, if you get thirteen homes and their owner occupied, um, and it fits under the STR ordinance, fine. But right now, we don't have that, so, anyway.
We have a motion in a second, before I place that motion, Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt your deliberations on this. I would recommend that, i- if you're comfortable with it, with that motion changing to say effective at the point the county commission executes a development agreement. That way, the rezone doesn't go into effect until after you've signed the contract, but the developer knows what the answer's gonna be. We don't, we don't have a full.
Commissioner Jenkins, would you modify your motion, or will you, do you agree with that?
I'll include that in it, I don't have an issue with that. You know, uh, I'm wore out over this issue, I admit it, and, uh, we've talked it and talked and talked it and gone run, round, round, and the developer knows, if he goes ahead and does this, that, uh, he's limited his own, and so it's with everybody's knowledge, and, uh, it befuddles me why the Planning Commission would do this, but that's okay, I, they've done it, and, uh, They've done it, and I can live with it. It doesn't affect me personally. So, I just, I, I will follow their lead here.
Okay, before I place that motion, I'm going to comment.
Better make sure the second agrees with my.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're right about that. I got ahead about thinking about what I wanted to say. I'm a little perplexed on this, if you want to know the truth. I have a, I want to listen to the people. They said, do not vote for the rezone. Charlie, you made a comment in your presentation, the reason that the rezone was proposed is that you thought the impact would be less. So, I, I want to side with the people. I want to side with the staff. But those two things are in direct conflict with one another. I want to side with the Planning Commission, who I think has the best interest of the county in mind. But we don't have our SDRs up and going. I'm a property rights guy, and I think a guy, if he has property, ought to be able to develop it the way he does. I agree with Mr. Bowden, and I appreciate you taking time out of, all of you, who've taken a lot of time out of your personal lives to come and inform us on this issue. It's been very, it's been very helpful. I'm the one, I'm an optimist, though. I believe that one day, we will get water there. I don't believe, I think we're in a drought. I know we're in a drought. But I know that Utah's been in a drought before, and then, we've been overflowing in other years. And so, it's just a matter of time. So, to me, there's not a, there's not a win for anyone here. If the property stays the way it currently is, and water, like Mr. Bowden said, water will eventually come. The impact will be far worse. But then, we're doing what the people want us to do and decline the, decline the motion on this. And so, I'm really at a, for me, it's a tough decision. So, I'll place that motion for vote now. And so, Commissioners, we have the motion on the floor for the, for the rezone with those restrictions that matches the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Thank you. Yeah, quite a bit of it. So, there we go. All right, moving on.
Excuse me, but we don't know what to just vote.
This is not time for public comment. I'd be happy to visit with you at the end of the meeting, sir. Commissioner, comments? Item H.
Have a great holiday. Enjoy the 24th.
Great.
Get the rodeo if you can. I've got to go to a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for you?
Motion adjourned.
Motion?
Aye.
Aye, great. Second. Adjourned. Mr. Bird.
Introductions, I don't, that's not cool. I understand. I.